I would like to call this meeting to order. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mrs. Becker, Mr. Corangelo.
Here.
Mr. Sizmar.
Here.
Ms. Gwos.
Here.
Mr. Hong.
Here.
Mrs. Reese.
Here.
Mr. Winston.
Here.
President Lacks.
Here. We have a quorum. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the rights of the public to have advance notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed and acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the East Brunswick Board of Education has caused notice at this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the Board of Education offices. Written notice was also provided to the Sentinel, the Newark Star-Ledger, the Home News and Tribune, and the Municipal Clerk of East Brunswick. All Board of Education meetings, with the exception of executive session discussions, are videotaped for later broadcast. It is a policy of the Board of Education that videotaped meetings are not edited for any purpose. Individuals who speak at the Board's public meetings should be aware of these videotaping rules. And as we do, we are going to go right into our closed session. And I'm sure that the people that have to crane their necks to see us will be happy to know that they can turn and look at the wall. Whereas the Board of Education must discuss matters which are not appropriate for discussion in a public meeting, and these subjects are within the exceptions to the Open Public Meetings Act and are permitted to be discussed in closed session, the Board of Education intends to discuss matters as follows, those items listed on tonight's agenda. The length of the closed session is estimated to be 30 minutes, after which the public meeting of the Board shall reconvene and action may be taken. Now therefore be it resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education will recess into closed session for only the aforementioned subjects, and be it further resolved that the East Brunswick Board of Education hereby declares this discussion of the aforementioned subjects will be made public at a time when the public's interest in disclosure is greater than any privacy or governmental interest being protected from disclosure in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act.
Oh my. Can I make my own motion? Moved by Mrs. Gwos. Second. And by Mr. Corangelo. Is there any discussion? Apparently not. We're a very, very quiet group tonight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sentience? Motion carries. We shall be back in about 30 minutes, folks.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here to celebrate our 2023 Wall of Honor inductees. Mr. Allen Broadman, Mrs. Patricia Laduka, and Ellen Murphy. These honorees have influenced our school district in extraordinary ways, and we will share details of their contributions with you later in the program. But first, a little history about the Wall of Honor. The Wall of Honor you see here, right here, was constructed for the purpose of honoring individuals who have made a significant and extraordinary contribution to East Brunswick Public Schools. A recognition committee composed of members of the Board of Education, East Brunswick Education Association, and the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association was established to develop the guidelines and criteria for selection of the honorees. Eligibility for this honor, and this is where you have to pay attention, begins at one and a half years following the June 30th of their retirement and ends three and one-half years later. A register of honors is located at the right hand of the Wall of Honors, the book's right down there, which details the service history of the individuals chosen for this honor. This register allows us to memorialize the wonderful contributions of these individuals. And at this time, I would like to introduce first the President of the Board of Education, Mrs. Lori Lacks.
Thank you. This is always a very exciting evening for us, and I do have to go a little bit off-script here for a second. Mrs. Becker unfortunately had some family issues and was unable to attend, and she and I have been serving on the recognition committee. And every time we do this, and I see Danny's smiling face in the back, because Danny is, of course, the trained conductor that runs everything so well with this, and I know that Nicole's going to follow in her footsteps, but this was a particularly exciting year for us. There's some faces that we've all known for quite some time, so I just want to say I'm sorry that Vicky doesn't get to be here and share it with you, especially Trish. But, you know, we always have kids come at all of our meetings, and we talk about the accolades and how wonderful the kids are. And so tonight, what's really nice for us here as a board and as a district is you are people that have helped to do that for these kids. You are the reason the kids are so successful. So I'm not going to take a lot of time because I want to hear about Mr. Broadman and Mrs. Laduka and Mrs. Murphy because that's why we're all here this evening. But just remember that our kids would not be what they are if it weren't for people like you doing what you've done all these years, and we thank you for that, so. Congratulations.
Thank you, Lori. And now I'd like to introduce Dr. Dana Zinbicki, who is President of East Brunswick Education Association, to say a few words.
Thank you so much. So, the rain has stopped, the sun has come out, we no longer need an ark, and I can't help to think that that's not a coincidence as we honor our three amazing people tonight. So, Allen, Trish, and Ellen, congratulations on receiving the absolute highest honor that's offered by the East Brunswick Public Schools. Without a doubt, each of you deserve this, in honor of your lifelong work in our district. So, one theme came up repeatedly during the Wall of Honor committee meeting, and that was people who made a difference and changed lives, changed lives. Each of you made an impact on so many lives in so many uniquely profound ways. Allen, your steadfast dedication to our high school students is so appreciated. Your role with We the People and IPEL has led so many of our students to such successful careers and successful futures. And the time that you have volunteered and continue to volunteer, right, in our community with our students in a variety of other ways is appreciated and admirable. Trish, your impact on our community is so diverse, a PTA president, an active community member, a leader in the East Brunswick Education Foundation, a teacher, a reading specialist, a supervisor, a central office administrator. You spent countless hours advocating for our children, whether through committee work, foundation work, a leader of the ad hoc committee in 2004 for the bond referendum, good job, and as a visionary leader in new programming. We appreciate you. And Ellen, you have been the consummate advocate for our special education population, as you have been sunshine, literally sunshine, for our parents, our students, our teachers, our support professionals. You simply are and were the pillar for our special education programming, especially our autism program. How special is that? So, back to the common theme, people who change lives. You've impacted many, students, parents, teachers, support staff, community members, colleagues. On behalf of the East Brunswick Education Association, we appreciate you, we honor you, and we are thankful for your life's work and steadfast dedication to the East Brunswick Public Schools. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zinbicki. Now I'd like to introduce Mrs. Joanne Schimmelwitz, who is the President of the East Brunswick Principals and Supervisors Association.
Thank you, Dr. Valesky. Good evening, everyone. It's a great pleasure to speak tonight at the Wall of Honor ceremony. I have been lucky enough to work with all three of tonight's recipients over the course of my career here in East Brunswick. I first met Allen Broadman when I was working in the East Brunswick High School Media Center, and he and I bonded over a shared love of history and politics, and I witnessed his incredible work as he put his award-winning IPEL teams together over the years, a true labor of love and dedication. Allen embodies the spirit of teaching that seeks to open the minds of his students, to encourage them to think and debate and analyze information. Allen gave his students so many life skills that continue to serve them as successful adults. His selfless dedication to the students of East Brunswick is a gift. I had the good fortune to work with Ellen Murphy when I was like a baby administrator during the extended school year program. Watching Ellen interact with students with special needs is like walking into a masterclass. Ellen has a repertoire of strategies for supporting special needs children that is to be envied, and she has trained many of our teachers to utilize those same strategies in our classrooms today. Our district has been fortunate to have her as an administrator here in East Brunswick. If you are ever in need of a hype woman, look no further than Trish Laduka. Trish is a force of nature with enthusiasm and creativity in abundance. I was lucky enough to have Trish as my colleague for several years in EBPSA when she was working as supervisor of language arts, and I relied heavily on her wisdom as she served as Director of Principal Support when I was a baby administrator. We continue to communicate regularly as she still works with the Grants Committee at the East Brunswick Education Foundation, a place that's near and dear to both of our hearts. And when I think about Trish, I often think about the term that we use around here in East Brunswick a lot, bleeding green. And that describes people who love and serve the East Brunswick Public Schools, and it certainly applies to all three of tonight's recipients. They have that in common with all of them, that they have this bleeding green thought for our staff and our community, and I feel so privileged to know all of them. On behalf of the East Brunswick Principal and Supervisors Association, please let me extend our warmest thanks and congratulations to all three of tonight's recipients, a well-deserving group of people who have given their all to this district and whose impact will be felt by the school community for many, many years to come. Congratulations, Allen, Ellen, and Trish.
Thank you, Joanne. And now, you know, listening to Joanne, I'm going to have to go back and check and make sure that baby administrator is not a recognized title in East Brunswick.
It's in the new contract.
So, for the next three hours, I'm going to talk to you about... Let's start with Mr. Broadman. Allen Broadman has been a tireless supporter of the East Brunswick community throughout his life, and as a resident of East Brunswick for over 60 years, Allen is a product of the East Brunswick school system and graduated from East Brunswick High School in 1977. After college, Allen worked as a practicing attorney before returning to his community as a teacher. And despite making a significant financial sacrifice that had many of his peers wondering why, Allen entered the field of education to share his talent and expertise with young people. With his legal background and his own high school experiences, Allen was a natural fit for East Brunswick's nationally-recognized IPEL and We the People programs. His teaching career in East Brunswick began in the spring of 1991, working as a student teacher alongside Wall of Honor members John Calamano and Dolores Meyerhoff. In the fall of 1992, he was hired as a social studies teacher at Churchill Junior High School, where he also served as the student council advisor. Allen created the Model Congress Club at Churchill, which continues to serve as a successful entryway for interested students to get involved in civics and legal education when they enter high school. Allen moved to the high school in the fall of 1999, and he took over the IPEL program after the retirement of John Calamano. At the same time, he became the advisor of East Brunswick High School's award-winning United Nations or Model United Nations program. And over the years, he led hundreds of students through Arjo's preparation, and with the help of Wall of Honor members Barbara Mayer and Joyce Lentz, he took them to Model UN conferences throughout the Northeast, including conferences in New Brunswick, Washington, D.C., Philadelphia, Baltimore, New York City, and Boston. Allen's hard work and dedication resulted in competitive successes that placed East Brunswick's Model UN program among the best in New Jersey while also garnering national attention. East Brunswick's teams and individual students won countless awards at competitions under Allen's stewardship. He was recognized by the conference leadership of the National High School Model United Nations by being appointed to their Board of Directors as a faculty member. Allen's greatest contribution to the district may have been his leadership of the We the People and the AP IPEL programs at East Brunswick High School. These rigorous civics competitions not only instilled the skills and inclination for students to become productive, selfless citizens, but they were also trained to speak, write, and collaborate at a collegiate, if not postgraduate, level. For Allen, it meant several hundred hours, as you've already heard, beyond what it would normally be expected for teaching a course. All that hard work paid off because in the 20 years that he led the program, the team won 17 state titles, represented New Jersey at the national competition 19 times, and brought home three national titles in 2004, 2005, and 2006. This is an achievement that no other advisor anywhere in the country can claim. In his retirement, which began in 2020, Allen has continued to support the We the People program. And over the past several years, he's volunteered over 100 hours of his time per year to our students. And moreover, he has continued to help financially support the program, both by maintaining a vast network of We the People and Model UN alumni who donate money each year, as well as his own personal contributions. Over the past 17 years, the Broadman Family Scholarship, established in honor of his late brother Stephen, has awarded over $50,000 in scholarships to seniors graduating from the program. Allen Broadman has played a significant role in making East Brunswick a top-tier public school district. Allen's dedication to success and the impact he's made make him a deserving member of the Wall of Honor. Congratulations, Allen. And Nicole is going to guide you to the reveal.
Okay, there, one second.
Allen, you have the mic, if you want to... As an attorney, I know you probably want to say something.
Well, we'll try to keep this to the, what, 3 minutes and 55 seconds that we're supposed to do at nationals. No. First off, I am humbled to be up here. It is... I am here because of the work of so many other people, and I appreciate significantly the award that I have received. But this is an award I've received because of the help of people, some of them on this wall right here, as a student teacher, being able to work with two honest-to-God rock stars in Dolores Meyerhoff and John Calamano, okay? And then, as a teacher in the school system, being able to work with peers that really helped me to understand what it means to be a teacher and how to do that, okay? I mean, this was people like Barb Meyer and Joyce Lentz, okay, who were incredible support for me, okay? In terms of working on our programs that are amazingly dear to my heart. I got to be, as a student teacher, I got to see these wonderful things called AP IPEL, well, it was IPEL II at that point. But to see students understanding this constitutional content, learning how to write, learning how to speak, to answer questions, this was amazing to me. And then, Model UN, again, a wonderful opportunity for students to be somebody else, to get up and to represent a nation and its viewpoints, not their own viewpoints, but others' viewpoints. The fact that this school system has been so supportive of this is something that is extremely important to me, and I thank all the board members that have come before, the board members who are here now, the board members in the future who will, I hope, continue to support these programs because of how vital they are. I see there are even some of my old students who have made their way here as testaments, if you will, to that, to the importance of these programs. And hearing from those students is also exceedingly, has been an honor from my perspective. The concept of being a teacher, when I first started, look, I was an IPEL student, and I found law, and I said, "This is great, I'm really interested." And then after practicing for a while, I said, "This is nice, but I don't love it." And this is where, by the way, when I would talk to the students, they'd look at me like, "You're out of your mind." And I would say, "Look, come back to me when you're in your 30s and tell me, is it more important to make the money, or is it more important to be happy?" And to me, the beauty was that I got to become a teacher, which made me so happy, and I got to become a teacher in the place I really wanted to be a teacher, okay? And that was here in East Brunswick. Having been a student here, having seen the school system and what it did for me, to then be able to try and impart some of that to these wonderful students, okay? That was amazing. To be able to work with a student teacher, I had one student teacher my whole career, and he's sitting in the back of the room, and that's Mike Wilderworth, okay? And how can I not identify and recognize the man who, honestly, if he wasn't here, I'm not sure how comfortable I would have been retiring? And that's Mark Mondry, class of 2004, first national championships, who took over the program and has done a fantastic job with the program, taking them this year to 15th in the nation, okay? And the help that has come from the woman who, again, took over, another labor of my love, Ellen Spivey, taking over Model UN program, okay? East Brunswick is blessed to have teachers like this to continue to dismantle, if you will. I took it from John and Dolores, and yes, I've now given it to Mark and to Ellen. But the bottom line is, all those teachers, all the administrative support, which are significant and very important, in the end, this is about one group of people, and that's the students. This is what makes teaching so wonderful, to see these faces, to see them understand something that they didn't understand, or to take a subject like history, I used to ask at the beginning of the year, "So, for how many of you is history your favorite subject?" And you'd get like three-quarters of the room putting their hands up, and I'd be like, "Yeah, it's not, okay? I got it." But to see that viewpoint change as the year went on, to see students begin to enjoy and be impressed with this concept, that's what this is about. To be able to still be in contact with so many of these students, to see what they've gone on to do, the amazing things that they have gone on to do, this is what teaching is all about. And I am humbled and honored by the award, but I'm humbled and honored by my students for their, what this is all about. Thank you so very much.
Now we have Patricia Laduka, affectionately known as Trish to all who know her. She settled with her family in East Brunswick because of the reputation of schools, and she and her family lived here for over 34 years. Her three children attended East Brunswick Public Schools, and Trish was an active member of their school's PTAs, serving as president of the Bound Monroe PTA for two terms, and two more as president of the Hammershold PTA. Through her volunteer work in the PTAs, her skills and many hours of work were recognized by everyone who interacted with her. And she began her employment with the East Brunswick School District as a substitute teacher. In 1996, she filled a family leave position in a kindergarten classroom at Lawrence Brook Elementary School. The following year, she expanded her role as the basic skills reading specialist, and she was the first to open a book room in East Brunswick. In 2002, she was promoted to supervisor of health, testing, adult education, and the summer academy. Then she served as coordinator of community relations and programs. Trish joined the central office team in 2008 as the director of community outreach, where she arguably had the greatest impact on the district. And throughout her time in East Brunswick, Trish worked tirelessly to offer opportunities for students and parents. In her work with the PTA, she helped organize monthly meetings of the presidents and helped gather agenda items that were essential to the success of those meetings. Trish also played a key role in starting the extended day program in kindergarten and early learning academy. No commendation for Trish would be complete without the mention of her outstanding work in helping prepare the district and community for a large 2004 bond referendum, which was mentioned earlier. She worked countless hours with more than 80 community members on the referendum committee, as well as the EBA, EBPSA, and the PTAs, and representatives from NGAA in discussing the need for the referendum and strategies for getting it passed. She planned tours of the school to give the referendum committee a good understanding of why the bond referendum was necessary, and she set up information sessions for the community in support of the referendum. She was out almost every night with meetings in parent groups, church groups, small groups, and people's homes, and she attended every back-to-school night. And I personally know how tough that is to do. In 2014, she returned to her love of reading and language as supervisor of ILA, English, and primary education, and Trish often worked from 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to ensure these programs were successful. An event that was close to Trish's heart was the annual Read Across America activities that were held in schools, and Trish helped to organize the event and personally drove the superintendent, not me, the superintendent at that time, Joanne Magistral, to every elementary school in the district to ensure she read to the students. I'm wondering where my driver is. During her time in East Brunswick, Trish served many positions and excelled at each and every one of them. She is most deserving of being honored with a place on the East Brunswick Wall of Honor. Congratulations, Trish.
I'm not really good at the talking part, but, you know, I too am humbled, honored. But, you know, I, too, am humbled, honored. But I so appreciate all of the opportunities that were given to me. So standing up here now reminds me of when my last child graduated from Bound Monroe and I was no longer going to be PTA president and I sobbed and sobbed. Well, I sort of feel like that right now. So I, you know, I feel like this is a culmination to, you know, so many opportunities that I had here, so many. And, you know, every time I said, well, when I was president of Bound Monroe at the very beginning, I walked into my first meeting. It was a stormy, stormy night and I walked into the school and I said, maybe lightning will strike me and I won't have to do it. Because I didn't think I could do that. Then the next opportunity came and I said, well, all right, you know, I'll put my hat in the ring and, you know, it just happened. It just happened and it happened because of so many people that trusted me, I guess, and thought I could do it. So I'm grateful, mostly grateful tonight, grateful not only to, you know, the people who came tonight, but so many mentors. Laura McMillan, you know, certainly Joanne Magistro, Carlotta Miller, Beth Warren. Everybody I worked with. I loved working in curriculum, the think tank I called it. It was just a great place to be. You know, I was remembering when we were talking about passing budgets and the ad hoc committee, naming the bear. I don't know if anybody's here who remembers that. But, you know, we, to get out the vote, we had everybody, you know, put their vote in to name the bear and I don't even know what his name was. What was it? I don't even remember. Yeah, I don't, I don't even. I don't remember. So anyway, I'm going to have to look that up. Danny, do you remember? Okay, good name, good name. Yeah, very good, very good. So, but again, I couldn't, I couldn't feel more honored than I feel tonight, more grateful. I didn't mention my family, my three kids. You know, they are who they are because we chose to live in East Brunswick. There's just no question about it. So I'm grateful to them for letting me do it. My husband, who said, yeah, go ahead, try it, you know. And of course, to the mentors and the people that are here. The reading specialists were just a favorite group to work with. Everybody, everybody. So I miss the people, I do miss the people. I don't really miss evaluations, but. I'm sure nobody is surprised to hear that.
It's always nice when people get up to the podium and speak their mind, like, I don't like evaluations. Many people know that East Brunswick School District is a destination for families with special needs children, particularly those children diagnosed on the autism spectrum. The reason for that is Ellen Murphy and the program she built in the late 1990s and early 2000s. She began in 1993 as department chairperson for special education and returned to the district in 2004 where her vision for the autism programs really began to grow. Ellen worked diligently to create a rigorous program run by dedicated teachers and instructional assistants at East Brunswick Public Schools. Her knowledge of instructional techniques such as applied behavior analysis and verbal behavior was unmatched. She introduced social cognition as a curriculum and building wide initiative to bridge gaps in social skills and metacognition. To have an entire building on the same page as the autism class within the building proved to be a game changer, especially when dealing with students with social skills deficits. The success of this model stemmed from Ellen's passion and strong trusting relationships with families, teachers, assistants, and fellow administrators. Ellen was offered to able her expertise while also empowering her staff and the entire school community. Ellen Murphy loomed large over the self-contained autism program in East Brunswick. Ellen and the program were well-known both inside and outside the district. Administrators throughout the county and the state were familiar with her program and numerous accomplishments. And she wrote and received a variety of grants, including a LOES grant to enhance the life skills portion of the program and a partnership grant with the public library to create a welcoming space in the library for families with children with autism. She was also awarded Governor Corzine's Governor's Initiative on Autism Grant. Ellen not only empowered teachers, but also the parents. She ran parent training, set up home visits, set up routines from school and the home, showed parents how to fill out the paperwork with the state to get additional services. And of most important, she made the parents of children with autism feel like they were not alone in this experience, but they had a team of people supporting them. Ellen knew it could take some time and tears for families to accept an autism diagnosis. But she was always there to nurture acceptance and plan for the next steps, sometimes shedding a few of those tears herself. The fact that Ellen's voicemail and email boxes were always full was a testament to how much she was needed. Her depth of knowledge about programs, resources, and her patience were unparalleled. She was always thinking outside the box. If a student was highly reinforced by splashing water in the sink, she'd say, let's write a program to get him to request it and earn this. And honestly, Ellen would have installed the sink herself if that meant connecting with a student. And you all know what I'm talking about. Ellen was always known for appearing when you needed her most, often with a yellow legal pad in hand that would quickly be discarded so she could help you assist with the behavior. Her assistance spanned from helping a student walk safely off the bus when classes were short-staffed to helping teachers advocate for themselves and their students by putting together a building-wide crisis team to handle behaviors safely and respectfully. Ellen's job as a supervisor did not stop when the school day ended. Her department meetings were part of the education and in part therapeutic, depending on how the day had gone. Ellen was always open to conversations with her staff to give her insight into the nuances she might have missed by not being in the classroom daily. And she was always there to celebrate the accomplishments of the students. Hearing a previously non-verbal student speak their first word, watching students begin to interact with the world around them. The paths created by Ellen Murphy are still present with the autism programs today years after her retirement. The profound impact she has had on students and their families, teachers, in the East Brunswick School District is proof that she deserves a place on the Wall of Honor. And we have cleared out her email inbox. Congratulations, Ellen.
When I got the letter from Danny, you actually probably could have knocked me over with a feather because this was the last thing that I was thinking that I would be deserving of. But I am humbled and honored also, those are great words. East Brunswick is a special place that has a really long history of special education. People might not know this, but I grew up around here and it was my choice because of the reputation for special education. On senior swap day, I went from my high school. I came here because I wanted to see what was going on. And I came back, and I came back. But thank you for your kind words, Dr. Valesky. I'm proud of the autism program that was developed during my time in East Brunswick. However, just like everyone else, I didn't do this alone. I had the support and help of many people in the district and I'd like the opportunity to thank some of them. First, the Board of Education, then and now, has been incredibly supportive and very, very much appreciated. Both Dr. Valesky and the Board have continued and Dr. Vigroa. I also would like to thank Ms. Susan Preston, who had the vision and saw the need for the program. We started with four kids and look where we are now, it's amazing. And Dr. Magistro for her support and her faith that we could move forward and do great things for the kids in the program. Sharon Weber Olaskovich carried that on. She was incredibly supportive and a pleasure to work with. And tolerant, if I must say. I thank her for ongoing encouragement. And I don't know how many of you know this, I may reveal some unknown things tonight. But it was with the help of Danny Ruggiero that we were able to hire some extraordinary people, extraordinary people. And that was because Danny, in the beginning of her career, was working in the program. So she knew, knows what the kids need. She knew the kind of people that we needed to bring in. We hired many, many teachers together, Nicole Tibbetts as well. And they were the usual, if I may say that word, the usual excellence that we find in the East Brunswick staff. But not only did they have to be well-versed, willing to learn, hard-working, but they had to have a passion. They had to show me they had a passion for these kids. Otherwise, they didn't get a position within our district. And that makes the difference. What a community of people we had, we have, working for the kids. It's amazing. It's, it's just mind-boggling. I'd like to say a special thank you to Mrs. Tibbetts. She facilitated the implementation of the social thinking program at Central School. And it benefited not only kids on the spectrum, but kids kind of caught in the middle because social thinking gives perspective-taking and being able to deal with living day in and day out. And it also helped the typically developing kids because what we did was we created a reverse mainstreaming program for the self-contained. And typically developing kids had to apply and then come in and they worked with the kids and to watch the growth on both because our kids in the self-contained classes saw typically developing peers, worked with typically developing peers. And those kids, hopefully we had some special ed future teachers, but they were amazing how they gave of themselves to develop relationships with the kids in the self-contained classes. When implementing the grants, particularly the LOES grant, we made Hammershold, Churchill, and the high school, we gave them life skills rooms for the kids that needed to learn to be able to care for themselves and become as fully independent and maximize their potential. It was wonderful how many people extended themselves to help. It was just, everybody works really, really hard in this district. But to see the extra that happened, just, I could go to people and I could see that it caught their hearts. And the extension of effort from all of the people that were working in the program was amazing. In fact, we might have a really different situation in the high school because we had problems with being able to figure out how to retrofit the washer and dryer into the current classroom that the life skills room was being placed in. And despite all of his demands and how busy he was, it was Mr. Juliana that managed to figure out how to get the washer and dryer working. And you remember that, Bernie, I know you do. He made it possible and it was, it was so creative. I mean, we had electrical panels to deal with and like, and he circumvented it all and made it work for us so that they actually could have the right.
No, we did it the right way.
Okay. And he might be surprised to hear this, but I wanted to say a special thank you to Mr. Crotchvelt because what we did with additional purchase orders and companies that we worked with, with all of the grants, his department was extraordinary in being able to handle it and keep it all together. And God help me, organize me with all of that along the way. And you guys know what I'm saying. But also, the child study teams went the extra way. And the staff, you guys are some of the most amazing people in the world. What you do for kids every day and the staff working knee-to-knee with them. It's just, it's, it made me very, very lucky to be here. Even the secretaries, the secretaries in the special ed department were constantly figuring out what tasks we could do that didn't violate privacy that was, and they were doing, the kids were allowed to do some of the collating and office skills that helped them become as much of an employable person as possible. So I miss it, I miss the kids, I miss making a difference. And that's, that's what I had always hoped to do. And I am so grateful to be acknowledged, thank you very much.
As we, as we wrap this up, I just want to tell you how honored I am to be here talking about these distinguished individuals. We crossed paths professionally, so we actually got to work together. But actually reading about and telling you about their history really signifies the, where the excellence in East Brunswick comes from. It comes from the people. And so I think that was well-represented tonight by Ellen Trish. Ellen, thank you so much for being here. Thank you for all your families and supporters being here. I'm going to turn it back over to President Lax, who will then determine how much time you get to gather and hang out here.
I'm going to say we'll start with five minutes, but if it ends up being a very long five minutes for our recess, then we'll do that. So we will recess and see you back in a little bit. Congratulations again, this is an exciting night. Welcome back, everybody. It's such a shame to have to cut off such a fun party. But I will tell you, since we talk about the excellence in academics, there is a selfish reason for wanting to get back to business. I am actually going to go out of order on the agenda because our student representative Megan has an AP exam tomorrow morning and I'd like to see her get a five. So go ahead and give your report, please.
No promises on the five. It's AP US History, not my best, but I'll do my best. So for those of you who don't know, it's AP week at the high school. It's AP two weeks. So we started this Monday and it goes until the end of next week. And basically, there's morning and afternoon exams. And whatever classes we're taking for APs, we just have to sit through the exams. Some of us actually have like back-to-back morning and afternoon exams. So we end up going into testing at around 8:00 AM, which is when school starts. And then we get out at like 4:00. So it's just a whole day straight of testing. But it is pretty manageable because our teachers and administrators do a really good job of like keeping things organized. So every year, it's a very like smooth experience. So we always really appreciate it. But even if it's AP week, our clubs at school still have a lot of things going on. We had our last principal's council meeting. We actually got together in the media center and we separated into different tables. And we just talked more about like things we want to see in a high school. And it was really nice because we got to talk to a lot of other people in different grades that we wouldn't typically talk to. So I made a couple of new friends and we shared a lot of different perspectives. That was a pretty good time. Also, our student council had a couple of cool events recently. We had a spirit week. At every spirit week, student council always brings in like a new day. So it's not just like, oh, wear EV colors every day. So this time, they had a culture day, which is really cool because everybody wore like cultural clothing. And it kind of just reinforces the fact that our school's like really diverse. So that's always a really nice thing to see. And also, they have outdoor movie night coming up tomorrow. We're watching a Spider-Man movie, so it's going to be fun. I'm going to get my ticket tomorrow, I keep forgetting. But yeah, and our senior class council recently had senior variety show, which is like, basically like a big talent show for seniors. But it also features like teachers who want to perform. So apparently I missed my history teacher perform, which is really sad, but it's okay. So yeah, and a lot of our clubs right now are also preparing for the NHS's annual Relay for Life event. And if you guys don't know what that is, it's basically a charity event. We raise money for like cancer and it's like a really good cause. So it's, it's like, basically. So it's, it's like basically a day of, or half-day of festivities. Basically, all the clubs set up different activities, and we can like go outside and like enjoy them, and also, we spend money on the activities, and all those, all that money goes towards like the cause. And we also have to walk around a track for the entire day, and that's like a big part of raising money, too. So all the clubs have like a piece in that. We do, we make our own activities, we make raffle baskets, so the entire school really chips into that, so it's like a really big event. So we're preparing for that. And lastly, our senior class just had decision day recently. May 1st was National Decision Day, so we all committed to whatever college we're going to for plan to go to a college. So that was, that was a really good experience. We usually have our decision day celebration on that day, but because it was the start of AP week, we're having our celebration at the end of next week. So May 12th, after APs are over, we're going to get together and have like ice cream and just like chat and stuff about whatever our after-high-school plans are. So, yeah.
And you're forgetting something, just in case anyone missed your decision?
Oh, yeah, I.
Do I?
What were the choices, I guess? Four young ladies.
Good.
Everywhere.
It was top.
Okay. Am I, do I give the longer version or like the abridged version?
Give the top three.
Okay, top three. So I, obviously, I got into Princeton in December, early action, and I, after that, I got into Brown's combined medical program, where it's like guaranteed medical school, so that was pretty sweet. And I also got into MIT. So those are my favorite three, and I committed to MIT, so.
And she will now be rooting for the Celtics with me in the playoffs.
Allegedly.
Allegedly. I've won her over. See? My Boston girl. Congratulations. Yes, that is wonderful. All right, well, you sneak out because Bernie is going to tell us.
Conspicuously.
Good luck on your exam.
Good luck on the rest of your exams. Mr. Juliana will tell us about the process for the board vacancy.
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Lacks. So at the last board meeting, Susannah Chu announced her intent to resign from the board, and that resignation was effective April 24th, and that set off the clock for filling the vacancy. The process is that the Board of Education has 65 days within which to fill that vacancy. So we are in the process now. The procedures being followed are that initially, the announcement, well, this is the formal announcement, but the advertisement has been placed in the Home News and Tribune. That was on April 30th. It will appear again on May 5th. The advertisement announcing the vacancy was also posted on the district website, available, information available on the main page of the website, and was also forwarded to the local cable channel for posting there. The, any interested applicants will follow procedures that are outlined in those announcements, which will include a response, providing a written response to a specific question. There's a requirement for resume, a letter of interest, and signing off on the affidavit required of board members. The deadline, once, we will send that package out, and then the deadline for packages to be received is May 12th. There's a time, I believe it's at 1:00 PM on May 12th, after which the packages will be provided to the board. And then the board will go through its process of screening, establishing a special board meeting, at which point interviews will be conducted, and then subsequently, an appointment made. All of this has to be completed by June 27th. And that is, those are the highlights on the process.
Okay, Mr. Juliana. And I bet you appreciate me moving the superintendent's report now, so you did have to follow that wonderful ceremony, but you did a great job, so.
I don't want to.
It'll be hard to top yourself.
I don't want to follow up our student rep.
And Megan. I know, and Megan. I know.
So is it my turn?
It's your turn.
All right. Thank you, President Lacks. The artwork on display in the boardroom this evening was created by students from Bound Monroe Elementary School. The art teacher of these talented students is Michelle Lynch. Kristina is the principal. Our Early Learning Academy, also known as ELA preschool, has been very busy kicking off spring. Students have been learning about germination, planting insects, and worm exploration. They are enjoying the warmer weather, getting outside to further explore and draw what they see. This year, the teachers introduced a new teaching strategies unit, tubes and tunnels. Every ELA classroom was provided with three two-foot-long tunnels that connect, as well as additional books for their classroom libraries, including Timmy Tunnels and the Spaghetti Slurping Sewer Serpent. Say that three times really fast. On Friday, April 28th, 4th grade students at Irwin Elementary School hosted Career Day. Students spent two weeks researching their chosen careers and creating presentations to share with the school. They used interviews from real-world experts to find out information about salary, education, and daily responsibilities. On the day of the event, students got to meet their career expert and present their research to them. Our experts covered a wide range of career fields, from railroad workers to emergency medicine and media executives. Parents, administration, students, and teachers all got to participate in the event. Also on April 28th, the district celebrated Arbor Day with a tree planting ceremony at Central School, and we would like to thank the East Brunswick Women's Club for donating the swamp white oak tree now beautifying our grounds. We also want to thank Stop &amp; Shop of East Brunswick for providing a tree seedling to every student, the East Brunswick Youth Council for donating a goodie bag for every student, and East Brunswick's Shade Tree Department for working with the school to organize the event. Some teachers in kindergarten, first and second grade across the district have been piloting the new units of study in reading from the Teachers College Reading and Writing Workshop, or Reading and Writing Projects. The teachers found the updated resources and lesson design to be highly engaging, rigorous, and developmentally appropriate. The students have love using the tools, songs, and games that come with the units. And during the past week, 6th graders embarked on an overnight field trip to Fairview Lakes YMCA camp. Approximately 450 students participated in the trip and were supported by 150 parents in numerous teacher chaperones. The weather was, as you know, unseasonably cold, but mostly rain-free, allowing the students to enjoy outdoor activities that exposed them to new, new activities and to learn about the New Jersey ecosystems. During the trip, students rotated into activities that included boating, limnology, in case you don't know what limnology is, it's freshwater ecology, archery, the ridge hike, and the ASE team-building course. Those are all really significant and important things that students learn. Feedback from the students and parent chaperones was overwhelmingly positive, stating they enjoyed the activities, appreciated the scenic area and the opportunity to socialize with peers that they had not had the opportunity to meet before. Teachers Catherine Merton and Edith Weinstein, who started the Butterfly Effect Kindness Initiative, celebrated the students' accomplishments at Churchill Junior High School last evening during their Second Annual Kindness Awards Night. Ninety-three students were honored with approximately 300 audience members in attendance and sharing them on, and that included our own board president, Lori Lacks, and board member Barbara Reese. Their projects were showcased in a slideshow, which was the highlight of the evening. It was a night to celebrate the participants who selflessly took the time to make positive differences in our school and community. The event projects were funded by EBF, and the event was further supported by a pride grant from EDEA. So we thank them for that. Brian Wishelman, Elisa Nelson, Eric Kaplansky, and Melissa Violet from the High School Counseling Department coordinated the first-ever trade fair at the high school this year. In an effort to increase student exposure to trade fields and non-traditional college pathways, representatives were invited in a fair-style event to speak directly with students who are interested in pathways other than college or are simply unsure of their future plans after high school. Representatives in attendance included the carpenters' union, bricklayers, electricians, salon professional academy cosmetology school, military, fire and police, Universal Technical Institute, automotive training center, and Rutgers ROTC, among others. Twenty different trades were represented, and over 120 students signed up to attend this informative event. In sports, girls lacrosse senior goalkeeper Isabel King earned her 400th save on April 20th, so congratulations to her. Coach Kevin Brady recorded his 400th career win in softball on April 25th. Congratulations to him. I believe this is his second at least 400-win sport. Omar's, our seniors Omar Rackley and our own Megan Zhang, who is the board representative, were GMC Sportsmanship Award winners from East Brunswick. Congratulations to our April High School Athletes of the Month. Students were selected for this honor by the coaching staff based on performance, demonstration of leadership, effort in practice, and of course, for modeling exceptional character. The annual art walk will be displayed from May 12th to June 12th in the center of the municipal complex. This year, we have about 90 signs that will be installed, each displaying between two and four different pieces of art representing grades K to 12. Additionally, this year, the students enrolled in the music production courses from Hammerhill, Churchill, and the high school, under the instruction of Alex Delbar, Eric Stir, and Zachary Gates, have composed music to accompany the viewing experience. So that should be very immersive. We look forward to it. So thank you. That's what I have for tonight.
Thank you. You're just further realizing how well we do in academics, athletics, and the arts. Our excellence knows no bounds.
Without a doubt.
Speaking of excellence knowing no bounds, Mr. Juliana is going to give a public hearing on the fiscal year 2024 school district budget.
Thank you, President Lacks. So let's start with some district facts. As we do each year, we'd like to go over some important items that bring to light the kind of an operation that we have in the East Brunswick Public Schools. So in terms of the size of the district, we are, as of 2021 school year, the 26th-largest school district in New Jersey. The fall 2021 NJDOE report listed us then as the 24th-largest. We are the largest employer in East Brunswick. And in terms of a population, when we, you look at what our school population is in comparison to not only East Brunswick Township, but some of the neighboring towns, we are a town within a town, and that 8,391 students as of April is not including the 1,500 employees, roughly, that we have on a full-time and part-time basis. We're a major transit system, operating hundreds of routes, traveling millions of miles throughout the year, when we extrapolate the number of miles for each student and extrapolate the number of students that we transport every day to and from school. We are a major food service provider as well. And here's some data with regard to the number of meals that have been served through April 30th of this year, which is less than 180 serving days in comparison to some other statistical information that we have gleaned from the restaurant business source. It's pretty impressive for the kind of operation that, that we run. In terms of our facilities, looking at what our square footage is overall in buildings in comparison to some notable sites, and then also in terms of land, the amount of land that we must maintain. We participate in various cost controls and shared services. And on that first item there, energy program, I had just received yesterday a report on our energy savings improvement program, which the board approved several years ago. We had gone through that process of making a number of energy improvements to reduce our costs. And that report, which was provided by Honeywell, reported to us that through June 31st, the first full year of the energy avoidance report, through June 31st of 2023, the district was able to avoid $1.7 million in energy costs. That's pretty significant. The savings have gone to pay for the debt to implement those savings measures. So this was a net neutral cost, in fact, even some to the benefit of, of the bottom Other, other initiatives in terms of cooperative purchasing with other districts, our in-house transportation services, our multi-tiered busing, cooperation with the township in financing, for example, and refinancing debt is an, is an effort that we have done whenever the opportunities arise and it makes fiscal sense. And in fact, that refinancing of debt, which will lay into what I'll talk about in just a few minutes with regard to what our debt service costs are for next year, which is that they're coming down because of the refinancing. We produce revenue through our community programs and other activities, and these are the various programs that the district provides. And of course, excellence is the name of the game here in East Brunswick, something that we always strive for. And here's a, I think, a very relevant quote from the Middle States Association regarding the high school, being without a doubt, one of the finest schools in the nation. It is a school that has a very strong academic program, supported by ample financial resources and guided by excellent leadership. And one of the things that we also like to talk about, and this was presented during the audit, but in terms of, of our financial management, we've been recognized repeatedly over many years by the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Finance Officers Association with regard to our financial management and reporting. So let's get into the budget, the budget facts. And this is essentially a repeat of what we did with the tentative budget, so there's nothing new in what I'm going to present. But what are the budgetary impacts? In transportation services, increases there. The increase is resulting from collective bargaining commitments, contractual-based salary commitments, and new staffing that is reflected in the budget, out-of-district tuition, health benefits, facilities maintenance, and charter schools impacts and related services and therapeutic counseling. So these are all increases in the budget with a total bottom-line impact of approximately Of course, one of the things that we've talked about every year since its inception is the impact of the charter school upon the budget. While it may be old news, it's still relevant news. And the impact of charter schools does require that there is an appropriation of funds out of the school district budget in excess of $5 million for next year. And while we are receiving an increase in state aid next year, a portion of that, roughly $500,000 of the state aid increase, is going to the charter school. So I think that's an important fact. I know there may be some that don't agree with talking about that fact, but I think it is relevant to know what those impacts are. State aid, this chart shows the history of state aid going back to 2009, and you can see that roughly from 2011 through 2010, or actually 2020 or so, state aid remained relatively unchanged. It's only in the last couple of years that the state has, has begun to fund state aid at a, at a more reasonable lever, level, still not fully funding where, where the resources are supposed to be. East Brunswick has been the beneficiary of seeing adjustments, but that increase in state aid has gone to support what our resources, what our resource needs are. And without those increases, we would be seeing some very significant reductions, I would say, in terms of the overall budget. As a matter of fact, the state aid increase. As a matter of fact, the state aid increase and the impact on taxes is what comes out to support that nine point twenty-four million dollars in impacts I talked about in an earlier slide from transportation and staffing and so forth. So those resources are absolutely going directly to support those needs. In terms of class sizes at the elementary level K four, we're maintaining very reasonable class sizes for next year. At kindergarten, grade one, two, three, and four, you can see class sizes are no more than eighteen, with a low of sixteen at the second grade level on average across the So our tentative budget is one hundred and ninety million dollars. It is a balanced budget. Our budgeted tax levy increases by two percent, which is the maximum increase that the general fund levy can go up. That's at 2.7 million dollars. I talked about the results in savings from refinancing our debt, and so that's reflecting itself in the next line, which is the debt service fund, which the tax levy that we have raised from the current year to next year will go down over 300,000 dollars. So the net impact of that is a tax levy increase of approximately 1.71%. And lastly, the final budget adoption will take place at the board meeting next week. There are no changes to what has been presented, and I thank you for your attention.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's any members of the public that would like to comment on this and this alone, I'd like to invite you to do so now. No members of the public would like to speak on this, then I am going to close the public hearing, which will move us on to the good of the cause for the public. So the Board of Education recognizes the value of public comments on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. To protect the privacy of all students and staff, concerns regarding individual students and staff members should generally be addressed by first meeting with the appropriate administrative staff. The participant is limited to three minutes duration. The lapse time will be determined through the use of a timing device operated by our board secretary. And I remind you, the public participation is not an opportunity to engage in a dialogue with the board, but to give us your thoughts. And if there is something that needs follow-up, Karen in the second row, we'll make sure that we have your information, and she will follow up with you. That being said, are there any members of this evening that would like to speak to the board on any matters? Okay, we have a very quiet evening tonight. It's because we all talked it out during the Wall of Honor. I am going to then close the public portion, moving on to our Board of Agenda, Board of Education Agenda items for the evening. Before I ask for a motion to move this evening's agenda, is there anything that we need to separate out? No? Then I am going to ask for a motion to, for the entire agenda this evening.
Second.
Mr. Carrangelo, and second by Mr. Winston, which leads us to discussion on any of the items on this evening's agenda. Then I will ask the secretary to please call the roll.
Mr. Carrangelo.
Yes.
Mr. Sizmar.
Yes, with abstention on Board of Ed number one, the minutes.
Noted. Ms. Gwos.
Yes.
Mr. Hong.
Yes, with extension, Board of Education item number two.
Noted. Mrs. Reese.
Yes.
Mr. Winston.
Yes.
President Lacks.
Yes. Motion carries, bringing us to committee reports, information items, and for the good of the cause for the board. And I just want to echo, again, I think we're all being very quiet this evening because we took in the awesomeness that is the Wall of Honor, and I forgot who said it to me, two nights in a row of really exciting, wonderful things to celebrate. So as Dr. Valeski mentioned, Mrs. Reese and I were able to attend the Butterfly Kindness Project Awards last night at Churchill. And I did bring back for the board, I don't know if you can get copies, we can scan it, this is some of the poetry from the kids. And this really is something unbelievable to see. I don't know, I believe EBTV, they did take part of it, or all of it, did they not? I'm trying to remember. But I will tell you that EBEF and EBEA, in partnership with our teachers, did such a phenomenal job, because if anyone is aware of what the Kindness Project is, these kids were given fifty-dollar gift cards that were funded by the EBEF. And they went out and did, it was something around thirty-something projects over ninety-three kids. And just as an aside, I happen to, my day job, other life, is working in nonprofit, and we were one of the lucky recipients for our newborn babies for one of these grants. And these kids took such ownership, and last night they did this beautiful slideshow, maybe that's one we can get a copy of that the board can see. But they presented, they showed all the things that they did, the kids, they researched it, they developed it, they implemented it, and it was all different things. I mean, you think about pets, right? Everyone loves the pets, so of course, everybody wants to help their furry friends. But they went beyond that. They went to the homeless, they helped babies, they helped the seniors, but they didn't just do something that took money. They put real initiative and effort into having relationships. And I just thought, it was such a beautiful evening. And then the poetry, they had a couple of kids, and this is what's in this book, there were a couple of kids that got up there, and one student actually did the poetry reading without reading. I mean, and we talk about as adults how difficult it is for us to get up there, and we read our prepared speeches, and this student just got up there and had a rough start in the beginning, but did the reset, and it was just, it was unbelievable to see. So I just wanted to mention that. I would highly recommend, if it's possible, to get that, I would really love the board to see it. Because Mrs. Weinstein, and Mrs. Merton, and all of the teachers that work with these kids for the poetry, I'm sure Mrs. Reese is probably going to want to speak to you as well, but it really was something that I have to say. And, you know, seeing Doctors and Vicky and Mr. Wilder with in the back, and I know Mr. Levitt had left already, he was here earlier, you should really be so proud, because it really was such an incredible joint effort, and the Pride Committee does a wonderful job of always being there for the great events that really celebrate what we do here. So that going into an evening like tonight, because I always say, you know, these kids can't be spectacular unless they're spectacular adults to guide them along the way. And so this really was a perfect follow-up to that evening, especially with the three individuals that we had this evening honored. And, you know, Mr. Brodmann is a product, like myself, of Mr. Calamano, and I have to say, he's done such an incredible job. So I don't remember who, see, I'm having my senior moments now, but I also had the pleasure of getting to know all three of these individuals over the years and seeing how they've touched the district. And it really is, Doctors and Vicky, you are correct about your theme about how they really did make this a better place to be. So I just wanted to say that. I also, I'm talking a lot, I'm sorry. So speaking about a great place to be, this is like, today is National Day of Prayer. I'm not sure if anyone's aware of that. And since I was able to work remote, I was able to sneak out on my lunch hour and join the clergy over at the municipal complex. And this is what I realize makes East Brunswick so special, because you heard about the collaboration, every person up there felt humbled by the award, and also talked about the fact that it was not just them that it took to get there. And we talk about the village, and so being there today and seeing our religious leaders come together, that's what makes us so special, because East Brunswick, you know, we're such a melting pot, and it really is terrific, and it's a great place. And I just wanted to thank, to thank the people that put it on the clergy, the interfaith council, it really was something terrific. And a lot of days being born and raised in East Brunswick, I'm very proud to bleed green and be from EB, but with a couple of these things, it just made me a little bit more proud, so. Now, would anyone else like to speak this evening? See, everyone's being so quiet, I had to fill the air. Mr. Carrangelo, thank you for waiting so patiently.
We had our community programs, community meeting, which I basically missed, and thank you to Joe and Anne Marie for not closing Zoom, I had a personal matter. So a few months ago, we proposed some programs for high school kids, and thanks to Jeff Winston and whoever else is on the committee, but they were prepared driving and maintenance programs. It was budgeting, money, and credit cards for high school kids going into college, nutrition, labeling, reading, time management skills, and also resume and interview skills. So the district put out a survey to the parents, and we got two hundred and eleven respondents, and it was pretty good. So now the district is going to figure out how to implement them. So we're a little proud of doing that. Thank you, Jeff, and the other committee members for, you know, wanting to get some things done here.
You know, thank you for that report. I have to tell you, and it's an interesting thing, you apologized for personal life interfering with the fact that you came a little bit late to a meeting. I hate to see you apologize for that, because I always like to remind people that we are volunteers up here, and sometimes, and I had mentioned earlier about Mrs. Becker, who's served with me on the recognition committee, so it was a little heartbreaking for her to have to miss this evening. Every time you see an empty seat here, just remember that sometimes there is something that comes up in a personal life, and please don't apologize, because we appreciate it.
I didn't want to disappoint the committees and some chairs, so I felt obligated to...
I understand.
Appreciate all the work that you guys do, fantastic, so.
But I do, and I appreciate that you take that to heart, how important it is that you are...
Of course, I'm here for a reason.
Absolutely, but I just, I would give yourself a little bit of a break, is my point, that, you know, as volunteers, I think it's admirable that people give up their time and everyone, so while your life sometimes can make it a harder so.
Thank you.
But I thank you for your diligence. Mr. Sizmar.
Yeah, since we did the budget tonight, I just wanted to compliment Mr. Juliana and his entire team, the admin. A hundred and ninety million dollars is an enormous amount of money to control, and it gets there with things like revenue, debt reduction. You know, Mr. Juliana's team just doesn't sit there and just take money from taxpayers, takes money from taxpayers. He's always looking for ways to keep the level of excellence, and in fact, raising the bar with the level of excellence in the district while being fiscally responsible, which is a very difficult thing to do. And, you know, over the years, I've known Mr. Juliana pretty well. He thinks about this stuff twenty-four seven, which, you know, Bernie, I know you don't like compliments, because you're kind of a humble man, but I just had to throw that in there. It's an amazing feat how much dedication you and your team do to actually caring about every penny in that budget. So from me, and I'm sure from everybody else here, you know, thank you very much for that diligence in your efforts.
If I may, I appreciate the remarks. It is a team effort. It starts from the top. I'm not saying that just because the boss is here, but it does. It starts from the top, and that makes a difference. And the entire team has to be part of that. It's not just one person. So I appreciate that the support that I get and that our team gets to make this work.
You're a spectacular team. Oh, the ladies, want to duke it out? Who's going to go first?
Well, the Student Services Committee met last night, and I will wait till next time to report out, because I don't have all the notes and the minutes from it yet. But I just wanted to say, the theme last night was about inclusivity, and the meeting was fantastic, hour and a half, two hours. It was a long and well-attended, there were just a lot of staff members and parents, people from the community there. But I was just left, and they kept saying the theme was inclusivity, but I really felt an overwhelming theme about pride and joy. There were staff members that have been here, how long has she been teaching?
Twenty-nine years.
Here, but she's got a longer career than that.
Twelve years, I think, twelve years before the twenty-nine years.
Yeah, so there were teachers there with very long careers, and there was a teacher here that was celebrating his one-month mark in the district, so we kind of had the very, very newbies and people that have been bleeding green for a very long time, and just the joy and pride, talking about what they are doing in the schools with the students, just really reinforces what you've been saying about, you know, it takes passionate and energetic and just joyful adults to get our students where they need to be, and the presentations were phenomenal. So I look forward to sharing more details about it, but it was a really great night last night.
Looking forward to that. Mrs. Reese.
So it's accolades to the Student Services, again, because this falls under, you know, the butterfly effect, is, you know, it's just the whole feeling that it's great to get, it's important to have good grades, it's important to be involved in sports or the arts, but to be a good person is the best, most important value that we can impart to the kids. And I have to tell you, you know, I guess it sounds corny, but it was the best thing that happened to me the whole week to go see what happened there. And just to see the next generation, that, you know, it doesn't have to be a huge thing that you do, you know, but it makes ripple effects, and we talked about the butterfly and how the butterfly flaps, and when the butterfly wings flap, it affects others around it. So here, these kids really, and thank you to the EBF, the EBEA, I mean, the support from you folks is amazing, and made possible for the teachers and Principal Mr. Hannis, I mean, just the whole feeling at Churchill was just a wonderful feeling. And I think we're in good hands, right? I mean, this is the next generation, and they were helping in so many different areas of the community. There was helping seniors, packaging items for them, like you said, with, you know, pets, and, you know, and it gave some folks, you know, it shows this, you know, special feeling among the kids that, from whatever area of interest they had, they all came together to do good.
And you know what? We both forgot. One of them was the custodians.
Oh, yes, that was beautiful.
That was beautiful. And they were cheering, and they made...
Such a nice feeling.
Yes, I think she made hats, she knitted hats for the custodians, and gave the custodians these great hats to keep them warm.
It just, you know...
So it really did, it went above and beyond the traditional.
Yes, yeah, so thank you for everyone who was involved in that. Thank you to Dr. Figueroa, to Dr. Valeski, and all the staff, and Dr. Bolio. You could see that it's just a feeling, and of course, we couldn't finance it without Bernie, but I think that, I know, all these exciting things, but I just think that sometimes in today's world where things seem so bleak, a lot of times, the news is very distressing, and it's hard for our kids to hear a lot of these things. I don't think we grew up with this constant news cycle, you know, where there's a constant news cycle on TV, on the internet, and they hear all the time, but they're saying they're going to do something positive about it. And I think that bodes well for our future, so thank you.
Mr. Winston.
Just a few things. There was a comment made during the Wall of Honor, the bear's name is Bruiser, by the way. It's not grizzly, and I just wanted to point that out before we receive thousands of letters from the residents who in fact do know that. One of the wonderful things happening in the school right now, which demonstrates nothing but love and caring, is senior assassin. I don't know if anybody has a senior right now, but boy, it is exciting. It's wild. Barbara, Ms. Reese doesn't like it. I can tell you, in our house, it's extremely stressful having a senior. And then lastly, and just to sort of couple on the words of Mr. Sizmar and directed to you, Mr. Juliana, regarding the budget. This bears repeating, because you had mentioned it once before, you know, COVID did have a silver lining in that some of the money that had come in, both state and federal, gave us the opportunity to explore some areas that perhaps, both on position and programming, and especially in the mental health area, that we really didn't have the opportunity, and that money now has gone away, and yet these programs have not. And we did, and were able to realize a near and dear thing to me, which is mental health, and I'm sure some of you, based on the news cycle read recently, the Surgeon General warning that the next epidemic is loneliness, which falls flat on what we're able to maintain at this point. Districts aren't always about growing and creating, sometimes it's about maintaining what's right. And this COVID thing, you know what, I'll take a win out of a horrible situation, and then I'll acknowledge your ability to manage this budget, to not exclude what is ultimately going to turn out probably one of the most needed and impactful areas in this district going forward. So for that, my hat tips to you, sir, and I appreciate your keeping that in regardless of the loss of those assets coming forward to maintain the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Winston. Mr. Hong.
So April twenty-five last week, Curriculum Committee has this year's last meeting with Mr. Winston and Dr. Bolio's team. So each time when I had this meeting, I'm very, I'm always excited, because I can see so many good teachers put their heart on the job. So for the future, we don't know what the future will be, what the future job will be, and what the career of current student will have. So by this Curriculum Committee members, they try their best to come up with all kinds of ideas, try to provide new courses based on their observation about the future, based on their experience, about their knowledge. So I really appreciate that. So I want... So I want to thank Dr. Bolle and her team, and all those volunteers. Each time, we have more than 40 attendees, and this time, it's a little bit more than 30. So this is teamwork, we work together, we can provide our student a better future, we can provide them with better guidance. So that is most important things to do, to be, have a better Curriculum Committee and Career Committee meeting. Additionally, I encourage those new teachers to join this committee, because talking and listening other teachers talking is a good learning process, can help you to grow as quick as possible, they will prepare you better as a new teacher. So that's why I want new teachers to join this committee. And last night, Middlesex County School Board Association, we had a meeting. So we first celebrated a few board members serving 15 years and 20 years. So this is a very long-time commitment as a volunteer. Additionally, we talk about how to solve the budget issue, how to solve the teaching and supporting teacher and supporting staff shortage. So now, some school district tried to pay higher salary, but to get teachers from other school districts. That is not the right way to solve the shortage. Basically, you are trying to steal other school district tissue for your own good, but the other school district will have this problem. We are trying to find a way to lobby the governor and the legislatures to find a way to get more students to be willing to be a future teacher, to provide them with some incentive. Additionally, as Jeff said, so the COVID money is gone, in order to keep all those so good important programs, we are trying to lobby the governor and the government and federal level to get more money to keep those wonderful programs. So nowadays, you know, we heard all kinds of bad news about our student mental issues. This is very critical to keep all those programs in place. So we are trying to work very hard. So because New Jersey School Board Association is not a member of National School Association, but we are trying to lobby directly with, go to Washington DC to do our own lobby job. Because New Jersey School Board Association needed to pay $100,000 to be a member of National School Board Association, and additionally, more than 50% of state school board association are not a member of National School Association, we believe, and we talked about a lot, a lot, we believe, this paying $100,000 does not solve our own purpose, our own function. Instead, we can use this $100,000 for better job. So that's my report.
Thank you. Then I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn this lovely evening, as much as I hate to see it come to an end. Mr. Carangelo and Ms., we got the two marks.
It used to be mark two.
That's right, mark two, then mark, I don't want to confuse them. All right, is there any discussion? Anyone that would like to prolong the evening? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions. Motion carries, thank you. We will look forward to seeing everyone at Hammer Shuld next week.